Oh.
Yep, I got a little, little thing to read off.
See, we go. That tickle, I'm sorry.
We thought it meant something else.
Yeah, I know. Just in overtime.
Start talking and we'll see if we hear back. Okay. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, August 26, 2024 City Council Meeting. Roll call, councilors Lovewell, Kelly, and Deputy Mayor Terrio are present. Councilors Morrell, Ragley, and Smith are absent. Would you like to share the invocational thought with us this evening?
I will. Please join me in an attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just, with soundness of judgment and making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell on their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father, amen.
Amen. Everyone would please arise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Does everyone's microphone on? Okay, I'm the only slacker, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trouble. Okay. Item number four on the agenda is our Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest. Is there anybody on the council who wishes to declare a conflict of interest this evening, based on the agenda?
I don't want to declare a conflict of interest, but I just want to make a statement that 15 Prospect is next door to my property, so I just want to make that known to the public.
Thank you. Okay. Item number five, public forum this evening. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Please come on up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Bruce Egglestein. I live at 34 Coolidge, here in Caribou. There's a couple of items. I went through the packet, and I pulled out page number 26, which is a memo from Mr. Gibson concerning the blighted property report. I have a couple of concerns on that. Number one is 15 Prospect Street. I assumed, and I thought a lot of other people in the community assumed, that the cleanup of that lot was going to include the garage. And when I read through this, the initial bid did state that. Then I read further down, and you've got a couple of late bids, and one of them does not include the garage. And the low bid doesn't say whether it includes the garage or not. And it's recommended that you go with the low bid of $15,000. I have a little concern with that. So, for $15,000, you go in there, you clean up the foundation, pull that out, you bring in some fill, level it off, grade it. Fence is still up, I'm assuming. Garage is still there, and to me, that's a pretty expensive landscaping fee. What have you accomplished? When everybody thought that the garage, that lot was going to be cleared completely. That's a concern. All of a sudden, kind of the rules have changed here, or the game plan has changed. I really think you need to put some meat to this, and get that place taken care of completely, not partially. Otherwise, this thing is going to drag on for God knows how long. And that isn't beneficial to the city. It's not beneficial to residents who live by that property. They want it cleaned up, the city wants it cleaned up, other residents want it cleaned up. So, that's number one. Number two, 91 Collins. It states in the memo, "Has been cleaned out." Is that, I don't know what's your definition of "clean out" is. Is this because that's what the owner told Mr. Gibson, that it was cleaned out? Has the place been inspected? Since you have put a notice on the place that it's non-habitable, I would assume that you would have a right to go and inspect it. If the owner says it has been cleaned out, that you can go and follow up and make sure that's done, because I'm telling you right now, it's not. I live next door. The garage, it's unsecured, it's still full. These past two weeks, I've had an increase of rodent activity in my basement. It's getting old, really fast. We need to get it taken care of. The other thing I have a concern with, with that property, from the last City Council meeting, we were told that it is up for sale. The owner is putting it up for sale. That's fine and dandy. I've checked all sites. It has not been listed for sale anywhere. My guess is, he's going to try to do a little bit of under-the-table, so he doesn't have to follow having an inspection or anything else. If that happens, we're right back to where we were, because you're going to have some possibly shady characters back at it again. So, let's find out what's going on here. If he is putting it up for sale, there are some neighbors in that quadrant who were willing to pool their money and buy the place. Okay? And we've mentioned that to various people. And no one has made contact with us. So... Nothing is moving forward. Nothing's happening. Yes, he took out three dumpsters full of trash. But I'm telling you, that garage is full. What's holding it up is the trash, because it's up to the rafters. It's not secure, it's open on the sides. We have issues, and we're at a standstill. We're not moving anywhere. And that may be because we've been told that, okay, it's up for sale. Well, there's got to be some regulations on that for sale, especially after it's been posted as that is uninhabitable. Has it been condemned? Has it been looked into to being condemned? Has it been looked into to get an environmental study, to see if meth or anything was made there? In order to get this thing resolved, I would really appreciate that, if we, you know, put our heads together and let's move forward. Let's not drag our feet, let's go. Let's make it happen. That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you. And we will be hearing more about the properties later on in the meeting. We do have our code enforcement officer here tonight to speak on that somewhat, so, you know, he may be able to address some of those concerns that you have. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Danielle, did you have anyone send in anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Well, moving right along. Item number six, we have minutes from both the January 2, 2024 organizational meeting, as well as the January 8 regular meeting. So, we can go ahead and separate those out. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or omit from the January 2 organizational meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Do you want them separated, like you said?
Yeah, that's fine.
Move to accept the January 2, 2024 Council Organizational Meeting.
A second. Moved and seconded for their discussion. Okay, oh, now I have to do this in order with so many people missing. Let's see. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. It's my organizational skills. Okay, item 6B, the January 8 meeting. Any errors or omissions in these minutes?
No.
Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Move to accept January 8, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting.
A second.
Moved and seconded for their discussion. Okay. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. Okay. Well, this is very exciting. Okay, item number 7A, under bid openings, awards, and appointments. Tonight, we are going to be looking at a proclamation recognizing Cary Medical Center's 100th Year Anniversary. That's on pages 12 and 13 of everyone's packets. So, 2024 does mark the 100th Anniversary of Cary Medical Center. And so, in anticipation of the celebration that's coming up in September, we do have a proclamation here that I would like to have the council approve this evening, and I'm going to go ahead and read that real quick. Whereas Cary Memorial Hospital was the first hospital built in Caribou and opened in 1924, thanks to the generosity of its founder, Dr. Jefferson B. Cary. And whereas in 1978, Cary Memorial Hospital became Cary Medical Center, which continues to live by the intentions of its founder to care for all those in need. And whereas Cary Medical Center and the City of Caribou have been trusted partners for the benefit of all area citizens for 100 years. And whereas, has become the largest employer in the City of Caribou and has been named one of the 100 great community hospitals in America, and is an award-winning rural hospital accredited by the Joint Commission. And whereas Cary Medical Center is celebrating its 100th Anniversary in the year 2024. And whereas the City of Caribou wishes to recognize and pay tribute to all those who have served the hospital over the past 100 years. Therefore, I, Courtney Boma, Mayor of the City of Caribou in the great state of Maine, do hereby deem it my honor and pleasure to proclaim the year 2024 as the Year of Cary Medical Center. On behalf of the city, I offer my congratulations and best wishes as you celebrate this historical milestone. So wonderful, I love this. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 100th Anniversary Proclamation, provided by Cary Medical Center. Second?
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And those flag is there this evening from Cary Medical Center. And I do have a copy of the proclamation that is right here, and I would like to present that to you, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you very much.
You are very welcome. Just open that up, so you can take a look.
I'd like to see everything.
All sealed and everything.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is the screen shining on you?
Oh. Sorry about that. Good thing you're here. Penny wants to get our picture. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item number 7B is the Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department's EMS Phoenix Award Recognitions, and we have Julie LaJoy with us this evening to help share those recognitions.
Good evening, councilor, city manager, and city clerk. The Phoenix Award is a nationally recognized award that celebrates the valiant efforts of first responders who successfully resuscitate individuals experiencing cardiac arrest. Because of the extraordinary efforts of these first responders, these individuals are able to make a full recovery with no neurological deficits and lead a normal life. During the summer of 2023, three outstanding individuals from our department responded to an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. The patient was operating a vehicle on a public way and became unresponsive. The vehicle was able to be stopped by the patient's wife, who was a passenger in the vehicle. She was then able to call 911, and our crew was dispatched to the scene, where they were able to perform life-saving CPR. I am extremely proud to announce our three award recipients. Firefighter Paramedic Michael DeVito, firefighter paramedic Kenneth Obar, firefighter paramedic Ryan Hall. And two of them are present this evening, Mike DeVito and Ryan Hall. Unfortunately, Mr. Obar could not be with us this evening, but I'd like to bring them in and present them with a plaque and a lapel pin that was provided by Maine EMS, who recognized these three individuals for their valiant efforts.
Wonderful, thank you.
Hey, you guys want to like pose with the camera?
Yes, please. Here, we can stand up, maybe? Do you want us to come down there, Penny? Is that easier? First, yeah, maybe that would work, if you scoot over this way.
Okay, hey, 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 hey. Wait until my turn. Oh, I can't see Tamara.
Here, I'll move this way, I'll move. You stay still.
Okay, everyone say cheese.
We couldn't hear your phone flash, wasn't as noisy. Thank you very much, and congratulations. Item number 7C is the Acceptance of an Election Grant Award to the Caribou City Clerk's Department. The Clerk's Office applied for a grant on Tuesday, August 6, 2024, through the Center for Tech and Civic Life. The grant is to help with temporary and seasonal support positions for the election, storage containers, rental of additional tabulation machines, new laptops, purchase of materials needed for election safety and security. On Friday, August 9, 2024, the City Clerk's Office received notification that they had been chosen to receive the $20,000 in grant funds to be used exclusively for the public purpose of planning and operalize, I can't say that word, operationalizing, reliable and secure election administration in Caribou, Maine in 2024. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to accept and allow City Clerk Danielle Boussette to sign for the 2024 Rural and Non-Metro Election Infrastructure Grant from the City for Tech and Civic Life in the amount of $20,000.
A second. Moved and seconded, further conversation? All right. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I think this is really wonderful.
It is.
Very good.
Really great.
Quick action by our city clerk.
Yes.
Is making this money here.
Good job. Very commendable.
I'm applying.
You got on that, Danielle.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is a public hearing, on the CDBG Public Hearing for the grant. Penny, do you want to go ahead and talk a little bit about this before we open it up? Or I can actually open it before you start talking, let's see. Public hearing is open at 6:18 PM.
So, at tonight's meeting, the City of Caribou will hold a public hearing to discuss the development and submittal of the 2024 Economic Development Grant Program, Community Development Block Grant. The purpose of the grant is to fully launch a new division for turf management application at County Ag and Turf Supply, Inc. Public comments will be solicited at this hearing and will be submitted as part of the application and project development phases. County Ag and Turf Supply, Inc. are working with NMDC, or the Maine Development Commission, on this application. As review with the State of Maine Department of Economic and Community Development, Community Block Grant Program, the city must apply for the funding on behalf of the business and must comply with all requirements of the program.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak about this this evening?
What is it that they want to do?
So, they have, they've been doing some turf management and application of...
Pesticide.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, right, so what they're requesting from the state is a grant to help fully launch that part of their business.
And get licensed to do that?
I think they're already licensed. Yeah, it's just, it's just to give them that boost for some equipment that they need for that. So, this is no cost to the city, it's just the city has to apply on their behalf.
So, it's for turf management, similar to another outfit that's here in town that does that? It's application, spring, summer, fall, fertilizer, weed control, pest control?
Yes, go right ahead, please.
How much is the grant for?
I think that's yet to be determined, based on what their needs are when they get everything together.
Okay. Yeah, we could, would you like to come up to the microphone?
I know this is a stupid question, but I confuse it with the people with the tractor. That's not the same people, right? With the green tractors, with the John Deere tractors?
No, that's in Presque Isle.
Okay.
So, we are not going to be applying.
Sorry. Now I know where it is, thanks. It's the other guy. Thanks, Penny.
You're welcome. Any further questions or comments? Is there anybody from the council who has questions or comments?
I have just one. Are we only allowed to apply for one CDBG grant? Correct, yeah. And this was the company that approached us to help them with this project through NMDC. Okay.
Further questions?
Nope.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:21 PM. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to work with the County Ag and Turf Supply, Incorporated, and NMDC to submit an application for a Community Development Block Grant under the 2024 Maine DECD Economic Development Program.
A second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second, any further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, item number 9A, under reports by staff and committees, will be our July financial report. We have our finance director here this evening.
Evening, Mayor, councilors, manager. Narrative is on page 17, and I'll be working on, starting on page 18. For those of you that follow the finances closely, the numbers significantly changed this month because of commitment. So, I will be bringing that up quite a bit tonight. Assets on page 18, totaling at July 31, 2024, was $19,544,054.52. Cash on hand was $4,64,788. And about three-quarters of the way down the page on the 2024 tax receivables, so the overall commitment was $9,873,512.34. The remaining balance for collection on July 31 was $900... No, excuse me, $9,473,403.06. So, we've collected about $400,000 through the end of July. Of course, that number has significantly increased in August, because people are paying. So, you'll see a big difference next month. We are about $29,000 over what we collected last year through the same time period. Moving over to the next page, the liabilities ending on July 31 were $13,648,434.19. Moving over to page 23, on the fund balance at the top of the page, we're at $5,895,620.33. Moving over to page 25, the expenses for the month of July, another current column, we're at $1,858,202.73. And of course, because of commitment, the capital improvement line was fully expensed, so that's why the increase in expenses. So, our percentage for a year-to-date, we're at 53.9%, and that's about 4.4% under budget. And just an update, one of the... And just an update, one of the reasons why it's under budget is because, as we talked about last month, the public works asphalt still hasn't been paid, but I believe that did get paid in August. So we'll see those numbers reflected next month. On page 30, we have the revenue for the month. Came in at $4,66,833.28. And again, because of commitment under general government, that was our portion of the tax money that we anticipate collecting for 2024. Bringing our total for percentage collected at 67.9% and that's about 9.6% over budget for the first seven months. Excise tax for the month came in at $172,077.22. These are just side notes. For July, our year-to-date is at $995,536.99 and we are over budget for excise revenue at about 5.1%. The revenue sharing for the month came in at $230,807.67 and a year-to-date, we're at $1,273,547.21 and we are over budget about 4.1% or about $84,000. And then the graph for the month on page 35 are our year-to-date expenses. And again, because of the expensing of the capital improvement line, our, looks like July was a big increase, but we're still under budget by 4, 4.4%, about $525,000. That's my presentation for the evening unless you had any other further questions.
Does anybody have questions for Carl? Thank you. And what are the wishes of the council?
Move to accept financials.
Second it. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is our bladed property report. We do have our code enforcement officer, John Gibson, with us this evening.
Hello.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you for your time, council, staff. Thank you for your continued commitment to the betterment of Caribou. I'm the new guy on the block. I've only been here two and a half months or so. So I hope you'll bear with me as I present this report. On page 36 of your packet, you'll see a memo that I did prepare talking about some of the problems that we've addressed. There's been 11 notices of violation sent out. Of those 11, 10 are either completed or working towards compliance. So that's a huge win for me, especially being new at this. As far as 91 Collins Street that was talked about earlier, it was, it was told to us by the owner that everything has been cleared out and driving by and viewing the property from a public way, you cannot see trash or trash bags or piles of trash or rubbish or garbage. Now, I don't have permission to trespass on the property and go stick my head in the garage or look in the windows or any of that. That's, from my understanding, that's not how this works. So that's why I did list that the property had been cleaned up, okay? There was a vehicle that was removed, junk vehicle that was removed in the front yard of 23 Hoover Street. The new owner of 61 Washburn, she wants that thing torn down yesterday. So just as soon as she can get the people out of there that need to be removed, which they've been served, she will be starting demolition of that property. And that 63 Washburn. As far as 15 Prospect Street, you can see that originally we did receive no bids when we originally submitted for bids for the cleanup of that property. Since then, we're, we're able to obtain two bids. One from Larry's Construction, which was $42,600. And then one from Thibodeau Trucking, which was $15,000 plus the cost of having law enforcement on site while he's working. My recommendation would be to take the bid of $15,000 to clean the property up. He estimates it'll take three days. There's a lot of concrete in that basement that he's got to break up and some of it's pretty thick. It's not a standard basement from what I understand. We will then work towards using a non-residential structure in a residential manner, AKA the garage as living quarters, and try to get them out of there and then make progress towards a complete cleanup. Okay, any questions?
Does anyone else on the council have questions? I have a couple.
So, yeah, that would have been part of my question was going to be to address the garage.
Yes.
And so that is, that's going to be addressed.
To serve them to stop using it in a residential manner? Because it's not meant for the purposes that they're using it for. It's unsanitary, it's unsafe.
Yes, I see it right out my bedroom window.
It's not, it's not for the use that they're using it. So we can serve them with that to get them out and then work on removing the garage at a later date. But it's a process.
Yes, correct. Yeah, there's, there's legalities to everything and I understand that.
And we didn't receive any bids at all on the initial request for proposals. We kind of had to reassess, what can we get done? And that's, that's where we're at.
And I think one thing, just to clarify from my understanding, when this went to court, Manager Thompson was there and worked on behalf of the city. I do not believe the garage was part of any of the orders that the judge ruled on. So the garage is a completely separate part of this, this issue. So the cleanup and everything that was given the date of July 1st to be completed, it all had to do with the part of the structure that was burned in the fire and then with the debris from that. So the garage is a completely separate issue that we'll have to work on.
However, I do, I do believe, and correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, now we have this wonderful code enforcement person, which we didn't have, and we have a great new chief who's committed to things. So I believe that the partnership between the two will really lend well into making sure that these things that have kind of gone on for a while with people doing things that they shouldn't be doing by law and by code won't be allowed to continue. But we're going to take away maybe this, this part. They're living in the basement, I'm going to tell you that right now. The foundation, that the burned structure, there are people going in and out of there day and night. So that'll, that'll be gone. That'll take one access away and that rubbish pile and that pile of garbage that's there will also be gone. And I, I think that that's going to address part of it. Then they'll have to tackle that. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a process. Additionally, he's, John is going to be responsible for this, this cost.
Correct. So this was ruled a dangerous building by the court.
Yep.
So at our next commitment, he will be billed for the cost to carry out this action.
Yeah, so, yeah. Anyhow, I, I think that it's not going to just be overlooked. I, I hate having to wait too. I mean, I'm not any different than the rest of the community. I'm going to tell you that. I'm, I'm right there with all, all y'all. But it's a process and it's, the law has, you know, their hands. They make, they make the rules and we have to follow them too, so.
So, so does the city have to start all over again with the same process?
It's a different thing.
So the garage?
Different, different. It's a different process.
So when we started on the house, there was, it was a house when we first started our dangerous building action. We started that like in January before that burnt, okay? So by the time I got to court was December, okay? Almost a year. I think we started in January 23, it burned in September 23. My court date was December 1st, okay? But at the time, we started the dangerous building action, the garage was just a garage. So as Mayor Bulma said, that wasn't part of the judgment. But it's a different issue with the garage. The issue with the garage, as our code enforcement officer stated, is that it's being used in a residential manner, which is not the purpose for which it should be put. Correct. And he's been working a lot of different avenues for that also, working with our chief of police, working with our health officer, which is the, the fire chief, working with our plumbing inspector, and also reaching out to other agencies like the Bangor, who, who was it?
It was
Is it Bangor Code Enforcement?
Jeff Wallace, the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, and he provided him with some good resources and tools too.
No, I think we're making really good headway. I know it does. As Counselor Lovewell said, it takes time and I think we have tackled one of the biggest problems and hopefully we'll take care of that a little bit even further tonight if we can vote on this to get that cleaned up and then keep moving forward.
I got a question too on 91 Collins. You said that you don't have permission to go into the garage and, or the house or whatever and look around.
That's my understanding.
Well, as a code officer, you have to stay within the curtilage of the, or off the curtilage in a public way. Now, can we ask him if we can go on there? Sure, we can ask him, but we have to have permission to go on there.
Okay.
And yes, we've posted it.
If he doesn't grant you permission, then it's probably something that you have to go to court and get as well.
You are exactly right. But I don't think it would be that bad because we have, he has been agreeable. I believe he's recently met with Chief Sosia also about, you know, this. So I think he's trying.
Do you have anything you'd like to add since you're here, Chief Sosia?
Well, so
Hey, you can go to the microphones, people at home can hear you. We know that. Thanks very much, John.
Thank you. Thank you.
He has been responding to all my emails. So if I send him another one, I'm sure he'll, he'll answer me and then we can set up an appointment and John and I and Mr. Corey can go visit the garage and then we can address that issue.
That'd be great.
While you're standing there, do you want to maybe talk about like providing police officers on site for any cleanup of the property?
And we can do that. I just need to know the days. I understand that the quote said three days, but I'd have to put it out as a detail. And if it's during the week, then my reserves obviously can't work it. So I would need the specific days. And it'd be cool if you could do like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday too. I don't know what a schedule would be. And if you want me to reach out once, once it's voted on, where you guys go with that. If you want me to reach out, try to get a good schedule for both of us.
I think that would be a great idea.
I can do that.
I believe it is known that you're short staffed. So you're trying to do everything with the staff that you have, which is challenging.
It is, but if we can work together, figure out what the days are going to be, we can try to make it work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we do have a recommendation from our code enforcement officer in terms of the bids that we received. What are the wishes of the council?
I guess I have one more question, looking back at the bid. There was a blank line. Did we, do we know all the, the costs associated with Thibodeau?
Come on up. Come back up.
I'm so sorry about that. Just, there was a, just a blank line on that Thibodeau. Oh, because of the Caribou Police Department. So we don't really have that amount. So it's just whatever it is. But I mean, it's going to, I mean, I, I pretty much believe that's going to be required in either bid, quite frankly. I don't think that either one of these bids are going to really require a place presence.
Said that he was okay with not having someone there.
I think it's going to require it either way, whether he thinks he's going to need it or not.
And they weren't going to remove the, the equipment each night. They weren't going to leave anything on site.
Which would take longer for
They have to, you know, load it back on the trailer, secure it, haul it off, bring it back unloaded, so that
Got you. Even so, I think we're going to be better off with the Thibodeau, even if, just in the mouth of my head.
Too.
Yeah, I think so too.
All right.
All right.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. And what are the wishes of the council?
I would like to make a motion to accept the Thibodeau Trucking and excavation bid of $15,000. City pays tipping fees and provides a police officer on site, lawn seeding and mulching to be done by landowner.
I second it. Moved and seconded. Further discussion from the council? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any idea when somebody can get started with that now that we voted?
We'll reach out and Chief Sosia will reach out and let him know and he's a go-getter and I have a feeling he'll get after it.
Great. Wonderful. All right, next on the agenda is our city manager's report.
I'll say too, Mr. Thibodeau's done other projects for us in the past and they've all been, they've done, been done quickly and under budget. I mean, in this case, he gave us a flat fee, but before, quicker than we expected.
Cleaned up nice.
Yeah, cleaned up nice. Like the old Mattress and Furniture Barn that's across from the airport, he did that project for us and I drove up by there today and I thought, I can't even remember where the building was because the lawn has taken, which again is a tribute to our city staff who, you know, are able to keep things cut and looking nice. But you can hardly remember there was a building there because he did a great job with that. So I, I know he'll do a good job for us, is what I guess I'm saying.
Good.
So manager's report, Riverfront Power Plants, the EPA is on site and working on the removal of non-asbestos hazardous materials like petroleum. Actually, they're moving the petroleum to be into the diesel plant because we're actually going to be taking care of all the petroleum in both plants as part of our brownfields grant and that's been done with the blessing of EPA in Boston. So the action at the steam plant is a circula removal project and this is being undertaken at no cost to the city. We received word today. Karen, did you want to update about that? I think you've read up
The asbestos contract?
Yes.
The asbestos abatement contract?
Yeah, so we want to go to the, so Karen is, we're going to have a side note because I know Karen read all the emails today and I really only skimmed them. But I think that Karen actually read them, so.
So what's happening at the power plant? We were visited by EPA and DEP early in August. And, okay, so the asbestos contract was supposed to be out in the beginning of August. It is now going, the asbestos work is going to happen by an outside contractor starting after Labor Day. The work will take six months, but they will need to stop work as soon as the temperatures get below freezing, middle of October or whatever, take everything down, they call it demob, demobilization, and then reset up in the spring to finish the job, okay? And there are miles and miles of asbestos covered, really dangerous stuff. I mean, if you went over there, it would look like, you know, astronauts on the moon. They have white, they have closed off all access to the site. You need permission to get in there. They only go in there with all kinds of special equipment and all this kind of stuff. So they're taking care of that. Again, they'll have to stop over the winter. Everything just takes longer than we want. And there is some talk about starting to take down the diesel plant even before they're done. So that may start, be able to start happening this winter, okay? So we can go ahead with the project that we've already applied for because as you recall, they asked us to stop while they were working on the steam plant. We had to, had to stop that.
And then petroleum.
Oh, okay. So any barrels and tanks of petroleum products?
They cannot do under circula.
Right, which is the emergency EPA action. So they've moved all that into the diesel plant, which that's part of our, they're kind of working hand in glove with us. They're doing a little bit of stuff like they took out some of the lead batteries. So that saved us from having to do that. Meanwhile, they brought their petroleum products over to the diesel plant and we're going to be working out a contract to have those all disposed of. That's actually the first step towards a demo. You know, the eventual thing would be all demolished. That will happen again before winter, I'm pretty sure, all that. And our environmental engineer is working on that with EPA. We don't really get involved in that. I mean, we're paying her through the grant, that's it. But she does all the groundwork. She's kind of the project manager.
And she's keeping us informed of everything.
Yes.
And EPA is keeping us informed of everything too. And while you're there, do you want to talk about Birdseye? Because we've got an update on that today too.
Okay, so this is really interesting. We haven't really talked too much about Birdseye, except that. You know, we know that by the, the council has said that they want to prioritize Birdseye as far as a next industrial development site. There were still some AOCs, which are areas of concern, we thought, a lot worse than what we actually found out. So we, again, we worked with our environmental, so first of all, we, you'll, this is going to overlap with the police station report. We had a survey done of the spot, the property, the acreage, where we're going to put the acreage where we're gonna put the police station. That's clean. Okay, so we're in the process of getting a letter from the state. It's called a VRAP, which means you don't have any liability for any toxic waste and things like that. So the rest of the property had three other, we thought, pretty bad areas of concern. This was from work done in twenty nineteen from Haley Ward, two debris piles, which they put a, this is why we were, didn't want to touch it, because they put the cost almost a million dollars just to take away debris piles. So we started looking at that last week with our environmental contract, and we're just like, we want to just get this done. Okay, we, we need to clean up Birdseye. And first of all, what we found out, long story short, one of the debris piles is gone. The other one is not, doesn't even, I think she said.
No hazardous material.
Yeah, there's no hazardous material. Just has to be like, taken away or smoothed over, like, no cost. Okay, nothing, you know, major. Thirty-three thousand dollars was the twenty nineteen estimate. Maybe it's up to fifty, who knows, but to take away PCB soils in one small area of the site. And so we were encouraged, when these guys were up here for the other, for the power plant site, to apply. To the state has a cleanup grant due in September, which that's coming up later. And we also could roll it into the big cleanup grant for the steam plant, if we didn't get the state grant, which we probably will. But, so Birdseye could be cleaned up really fa, you know, relatively easily. And then the frosting on the cake is, we also received in the last day or two, a notification from EPA does, and this rolls into the Economic Development Committee, EPA will do a revitalization plan for brownfields. In other words, they'll have engineers, they'll examine all the infrastructure, all what, what you need. You meet with your council, your environment, your economic development. What do you want to do with this site? What do you want to put on here? What are you gonna need? They'll do the whole plan of what it's gonna cost, what it's gonna look like, what do you want to do with Birdseye? So EPA, and he said that might even start in October. So, and this is all, we just have, we're very proud of ourselves. We have really good relationship with the EPA in Boston and with the DEP. So when, after he came up here, we took him out to Birdseye. They looked at that, and they're like, we're gonna take care of this. It's been going on long enough. So not only will we have it cleaned up, but we'll have a contract, we'll actually go out to bid with a firm that will actually produce a plan for whatever we want, industrial park, whatever we want there.
Business center.
So we're very excited about all that. So some, stuff is really starting to happen. Again, it's been a long time coming.
It's really, really great.
That's good.
It's happening.
And you have worked so hard. Both of you have worked so hard on these grants. We really appreciate that.
Oh, to that point, we were encouraged, and we're working on this now, trying to find out to hire a large environmental engineering firm, like, from downstate to handle the steam plant. That is gonna be like, like, the diesel plant was like nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The steam plant's gonna be four million. Okay, so, and that's the max that we can apply for. So we can, EPA has a procedure where we can go out to bid, which we'd have to do that really soon, and they can actually write the grant for us this time. Okay, and do the work. Okay, they, but we have to go through the right process for that to happen. We're hoping that that's gonna work.
But we've heard back from UConn Tab, and we've heard back from EPA, we've heard back from DEP, so.
It's great.
We're getting all our ducks in a row.
You two are magic.
No, no, no.
You really are. You work so well together.
I, I have to agree. I mean.
Oh, my goodness.
Karen starts stuff, and then, like, she hands it over to me, and I'll do my editing and send it back. And I, I do think that we make a great team.
And then I'll go, oh, did you?
Yeah, I know. And then sometimes we'll, like, I'll be leaving my desk, and she'll be leaving our desk, and we'll meet in the middle and say the same thing, like, that we both, like, remembered something from, from there that we.
Like follow-ups.
Yeah, follow-ups about, oh, we need to write this in there, because, you know, we've really compiled a lot of documentation on these brownfield sites. And I've been talking to another person in another section of DEP about, like, investigating what other brownfield sites that we may have that we can start on after these, just to clean up this contamination. So thanks very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Very good. Worked so good together. It's great.
So breaking the initiative, there's a kickoff Zoom meeting tomorrow with, so Charter Spectrum received a grant from the Main Connectivity Authority to do last mile broadband in Caribou. And this was back in April of twenty twenty-three. So we are just now, tomorrow, having our first, like, Zoom update from MCA on that. The last thing that I've heard from Charter is that they're working on the design and the pole permits. Events and marketing, the Central Arousant Chamber of Commerce, Oktoberfest will be held at the airport on September fourteenth. The Fiftieth Annual Fall Arts and Crafts Fair in Caribou, which is the oldest one in Northern Maine, will be held October nineteenth and twentieth. And planning has started for Small Business Saturday, November thirtieth, and events during the Christmas season. For Land Bank, TEC O'Brien, who is from the newly formed Maine Land Bank office, was in Caribou earlier this month and towards sites in Caribou. And so this is new. He's only been on, on the job for maybe a month. So the state started this with funding that they're collecting from landfills on construction and demolition debris. And so they've had to, to stand up this office, another state office funded through, in this case, a surcharge on construction demolition debris. So they hired him. He has a background in, as an attorney, and also in planning. And in his month, he's been on a listening tour. He came to NMDC, gave a presentation, and then visited some communities, including Caribou. I met with him. I toured him around some sites that we'd like to do, like some landbank initiatives. And he said, and then he went to Fort Fairfield. And he said, and then Karen and I ran into him, like, later in the day. So he said, I'm so impressed with Northern Maine seems to really be thinking about this and having ideas about what they're doing. So the town of Van Buren, through the great leadership of their town manager, Luke Dyer, a Caribou native, he's been doing some great things up there. I have to always give a shout out to be a from Caribou, doing great things. And so he's really been impressed with that. And one of the questions that I had for him was, you know, what do we do with these properties that we, that the city has acquired through the automatic lien foreclosure process? And what's, you know, what can we do about that? And he says, oh, I'm on it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on that for you. I have not touched base with him since he left here. But he said that in general, from his listening tour, it was Northern Maine that really had their, you know, had the questions, had the plans, had properties. So, so I think we have that going for us. I think that he left here with a lot of enthusiasm about maybe starting some of these state programs up here. So, and again, we have wonderful partners, so NMDC, J. Cam, Kristin Henry, they both, Kristin, I guess, put this together, according to Mr. O'Brien, like, he called her, and he's like, hey, I'd like to come up. And she's like, okay. And she had him a full day's schedule, just, you know, from using her contacts in the different communities. So he was impressed by that, too. So Federal American Rescue Plan Act, all funds need to be committed by December thirty-first, and I would like to have that as an agenda item at a future meeting. And our code enforcement officer, Mr. Gibson, provided an update on the blight cleanup.
Chapter thirteen.
Oh, yeah. Well, chapter thirteen, Planning Board hopes to have something.
That's zoning.
What's that?
That's the new zoning.
Yeah, new zoning for the comprehensive plan. So the Planning Board hopes to have something to the city council in October. The Development Committee met on the twenty-first. There's many good things happening. They are actually, right now, working on their second, like, icebreaker meeting with the different committees to start working on, you know, how all the committees in the community can start working on one big plan together for something economic development related. Because as we know, we need growth to increase the tax base, to increase revenue, to offset, you know, increases in the budget. Riverfront Master Plan, so our, this is through the Northern Border Regional Commission grant. So we had to do our NEPA review. It's complete. It's been sent to MBRC. So we're hoping to have a final notice to proceed soon. Then we can go out to bid for our Riverfront Master Plan. And there has been interest from contractors. So I don't think we'll have the problem we've had with other things not getting any bids, because we have people who can appreciate the fact that Caribou has a very underutilized waterfront, and there's some good things that can happen there. And it can go hand, in hand with the other initiatives we have, with, you know, brownfields, with the DOT VPI, with our new comprehensive plan. And this Riverfront Master Plan's gonna fit right with this. And now our Birdseye plan. We have all those things going. The facade improvement program, so fall applications are due September thirtieth for commercial properties in the downtown and RC two Tiff districts. So those applications are on our website now. They need to be turned in by September thirtieth, and we will have an ad going out in the paper also. The economic, Caribou Economic Growth Council met on the twenty-second. All loans are current, which is good news. So business outreach, Addie LaRoche from Maine and Company came to find out more about Caribou last Friday. We had a really good talk. The Development Committee had asked for, and the council had funded a subscription to place their AI. She was very excited about that. It wasn't something they could afford to do, because they are, you know, a concern that works statewide. But she, I gave her some of the sample data that we have run. She was very excited about that. And they recently brought us a project that we are not able to really fully talk about right now, but she's excited to see that going forward, too. And is, when something fits, she's excited to bring something else to Caribou when, when they have something. So fire station renovations, a municipal buildings committee meeting needs to be rescheduled. Police station artifacts is here. River Road, Versant is working to get the pole moved.
Somebody calm Joan down.
The deputy mayor is not looking at it. So this morning, I did speak to someone at Versant Power, and their goal is to have it moved by September third.
It's next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Hey, that's soon.
So, you know, I didn't ask for a year, though. So maybe I said it for third next year. No, I'm just kidding you. Investment policy, the city council investment committee is meeting this week on the airport. Again, so the airport, we talked about Oktoberfest, but I will say that our triennial inspection by the FAA inspector happened a couple of weeks ago. And Dave told me all about it today. And he was, he noticed that we are really working on the issues that he's told us to work on. And that's something that I have to really thank the council for, because you've been supportive of us bringing up the standard at the airport and meeting those FAA requirements. And he noticed. And he went out of his way to tell Dave that he noticed that we'd been working on all those things. So of course, he had to find something, because the inspectors have to find something. And our something was that he felt that where the runways end, maybe we needed a little bit more dirt up there. And I'm thinking, honestly, if that's all you can find, you know, the, the crew that's working at the airport through the public works under the direction of Dave Valet, our public works director, is doing a great job. Because literally, wow, that's nitpicking. If that's all you can find, everything else is up to snuff there. So I don't even know where it was. Oh, yes, LED streetlights. So I think we have, we have a meeting scheduled for that, too. That's on Thursday, to talk about the streetlights. The comp plan update, the Planning Board has drafts of several sections of the comprehensive plan. Karen's been working hard on that. Fifteen Prospect Street, we did get an update on that from our code enforcement officer. Age-friendly efforts, so our next meeting is tomorrow. I don't know, I have July third. Tomorrow was the next meeting, and it's at the library at two o'clock, and all are invited. And I know that Elizabeth Singer, who runs the Age Friendly Caribou Group through Cary Medical Center, really wants to hear from folks to see, you know, what, what we should be pursuing for age-friendly funding and activities. And again, Cary Medical Center, the hundredth anniversary of Jefferson Cary's vision for a Caribou Community Hospital is celebrated all month long. Administrative approvals, Northern Maine Brewing Company, their liquor license was renewed, and I believe everything is all set for the Oktoberfest, too, correct, Danielle? So I would take any questions anyone has.
Just commenting that I'm happy there's going to be a highway meeting about the, the streetlights. That's my thing. Joan has her Versant pole, and I have the streetlights, so.
I have other things, too.
No, glad to hear that that's getting taken care of.
Yep. It is.
Anybody else have any questions for Penny?
If you do, you know where to find me.
What is the issue on Water Street? Things have been kind of a standstill there after the fire?
So we don't own the property.
You don't?
No.
Okay.
The Bickfords still own that property. So the city has put a fence up, because we don't want someone to get hurt. But we don't own it.
But other than that, there's not, kind of an eyesore, I think.
It is, for sure. It would take engineering for us to figure out how to deal with that, because of the two buildings, which we also don't own on either side. So it's.
Is the owner in the works of doing anything?
I don't believe so.
Just gonna leave it?
I believe so.
Can they legally do that?
They don't have the money to do anything, is their excuse. So there was not insurance on the building. The lender, Nor State, had forced place insurance on it that made them whole and paid off their loan. But they weren't interested in using any of those funds for taxes or cleanup or anything else. So Nor State, you know, took the proceeds of the insurance company that they paid for, and that they wiped their hands of it, discharged their loan. And so now the Bickfords own it with no mortgage.
Are they paying taxes on that property?
They are not.
Okay, in the interest of time, just because this is kind of off topic. But it does go along with some of our blighted properties and those things. Then we can add this as an agenda item, or maybe do a report on this as part of our next code enforcement report, or something to that nature. But yes, I definitely understand where you're coming from with that. Okay, item number ten on our agenda is a police station update by Ellen Angel of Artifacts. Ellen is here with us this evening.
I think Ellen and Shelley.
Come on, oh, hello, come on in. Come on in on up to the, Shelley, come on up, too. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Pleasure. Beautiful drive tonight. I'm gonna steal a chair. Uh, who else? Where, I don't know where everybody can see it. If we put it here, does it show up on the board?
Um, no, but I mean, do you have it on a, on a drive or anything?
I don't have this one. It's really just for comparisons. It's just, I just wanted to illustrate where we were and where we are.
Okay.
Ellen, can you move it up that way, just a little so that these folks maybe can see it a little bit, too? Thank you so much.
Is that possible? I don't know if it can be. This is the, this is from backward. So, but, so Ellen Angel from Artifacts. I'm an architect, here from Bangor for the evening. And Shelley, whoa, there's Shelley, Shelley Lazott, who's a civil engineer. So we thought between the two of us, we could cover most of the questions that we see you had previously raised. Just a little background for, because I know many of you, because I've been working on this for a long time. I think twenty seventeen, maybe, around there, we started. So, but I haven't met the new chief yet. Was looking forward to getting here early, but that didn't work. So we'll do that. We'll, we'll make sure we meet and spend some time. But in, the last time we were here, I believe, was in February. And at that time, we presented this design. Now, architectural design goes through a lot of steps, right? We start with a concept, an idea, and a basic program of what the needs are. That was developed with the chief and staff, initially in twenty seventeen, updated in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty-three, and then updated again a little bit after that, because the chief and manager Thompson had gone to conference and seen what really contemporary stations, the direction they're going. So we were. what really contemporary stations, the direction they're going. So we were given slightly different direction and some ideas on how we could, you know, they best thought we could make that work and we thought we could make it work. So that's where this design came from. It was a 22,350 square foot building. It was a main floor and then a basement that basically had the Sally port, the, some evidence processing, locker room, gym, some functions and some space for storage, you know, as a growth space. We did the cost estimate on that and we, you know, it was approved by the council, we should go ahead with the next steps, which would be design development, right? So we go from this concept, the schematic design to design development. Design development is where you actually make the, the building work. At the level that we're at concept, as architects through our experience, we know we can make it work, but the proof is not yet in the pudding. So what we did in, in the interim is we looked at the cost estimate, which came in higher than manager Thompson said we could be. And we worked to reconfigure that building. So what we, where we are now is a, is this the right one?
No, this is the one from February. When you said February, I said, oh, I can pull that up.
Right. That's, so that's two stories, right? So, and actually that plan is this plan upside down. So what we did is we, we worked to maintain the functional requirements that were part of this 23, 22,000 square foot building, right? Maintain those requirements, take out anything that was fat, anything that was available future development, in other words, just empty space, and move it to a location further up the site where we didn't have as much earthwork, right? We were attempting to use the configuration of the site to produce a basement space, right? But in actuality, the cost of that basement space was pretty expensive. It wasn't free space. And part of the reason for that is because the walls of the, of the police station are, are pretty hefty, right? And so the foundation becomes equally hefty. And so we were dealing with some quite thick concrete walls and some significant earthwork. And so the cost brought us up. So we've been spending the, the interim developing this new plan. Now, in terms of concept, it's the same concept. In other words, the materials are the same, the appearance is the same, the critical function spacing is the same. We haven't, like, we haven't made the size of any of the critical functions smaller. We've just eliminated some of the things that maybe were unnecessary. Chief didn't feel like he needed a restroom right off his office? He doesn't have a restroom out of his office anymore, right? So maybe we can use some of the spaces dual purpose. You know, we, we looked at all of that. That's how we got from the 22,000 to the 13,650 square feet. And so that's where we are now. Now, along with that, we've done a lot of development of the plans. So we have, you know, basic structural layouts. We've engaged a mechanical, electrical engineering consultant who are prepared with the drawings we have now to start that work. And we've done an updated cost estimate, which I believe that everybody got, right?
Yep.
Now, that cost estimate is, and the project cost estimate, which we produced. So somebody else, a consultant, does our cost estimating for us. Cause in my positive, my positivity, I always want to make things, you know, like, well, maybe that's a little less, maybe that's a little, I have a cost estimator that says, no, this is what things cost. And I had questions because in the past you'd asked, well, are costs less expensive here in the county than they are, say, in Bangor or Portland or? And my cost estimator said the costs that are in this are Aristoc County costs. That she's estimating a number of projects and for example, when a project's complete or when it's bid and, and a contract signed, I send her that information so that she can update. So she always knows where the numbers are. And she's like, these are where the numbers are in Aristoc County right now. So maybe you got something cheaper when you did the school. Maybe somebody got lucky and got, you know, something cheaper in a project that they're working on. But generally, these are the costs that are coming in from Aristoc County. So there are things on the, there are still things where we can cut, where we can save a little bit of money if that's, you know, if that's still, the number's still too high for you. It's within, you know, the numbers that we were given, very close anyway. And I would say that the problem that we're having now is as we start to cut, we're going down this downhill slope trying to catch up with something that's gonna, the costs are going to go up faster than we can cut costs right now, right? I mean, we've seen that in the seven years since we started working on this. Costs have more than doubled, probably tripled in most cases. And we're seeing that certain things, we're not saving money by, by cutting the amount of them because the cost of the thing in six months is more than it was six months ago, right? So that's my only caveat to all of this. But there are things, I know if you went through that cost estimate with the, with the fine tooth comb, you might say to me, hey, we could get rid of this. And we can get rid of that, right? Cause we're still at that stage. We're at the design development stage. Once we complete this stage and we're into the construction documents, changing things becomes expensive. Somebody asked as one of their questions, well, what are your extra costs now for doing the changes from where we were now to where we are today? Nothing. We signed a contract with you to complete this project and we will complete it, you know? So there are no additional costs from our side. If we go further along and suddenly you say, oh no, we have to change everything, then we, then we start looking at our fees changing. But for us right now, we're on a path, a trajectory to finish this, get it out to bid, get it constructed, starting in 2025. And so that's, that's how we've approached it. So I'm open to any questions you have for me or for Shelley and hopefully I answered most of it on your letter.
So I, I know that one of the other counselors had asked this question before and that is, does this estimate include the site work or is that still on the city?
No, we have included, well, we've included, let's see, this gives you the, we have included the cost of getting from, getting, I guess this is Birdseye Avenue now, if this goes straight that way, right? We have included this cost and the cost of the paving and the cost of the grading for the site and all that. So that is included. We had hoped that that could be put on another budget for improvement for the site, but at this point, it's included in the cost estimate.
Are there other, are there other costs that are not included that would be responsibility of the city?
Not, not, we haven't really, unless we specifically in that letter, and I can't think of anything that we said, that's a city cost. There's some fees and things that maybe are, but.
Well, clerk of the works.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I think we have a placeholder for that, but I think we'll have to look at what the actual, what we think that's going to be.
Yeah. In our project budget, the items, there were some questions of why were there some items in the first section, section A, why weren't they in section B? Section A is typically the stuff that, that you pay for. Section B is typically stuff that comes in as part of a consultant contract. And that's why we separated it out so that reimbursables for us come in section B, whereas reimbursables that, you know, like for a city attorney or something would come in section A. That's the big difference between those. So yeah, no, I think all that's.
Yeah, Jan, go ahead.
Hi, Jan Marchison. Hi, I'm a volunteer with the, um, the, I noticed in the cost estimate that none of the contaminated soils or anything like that was included in the costs.
Right.
Are you going to include that in some future, I know you feel you've moved it, but there are still contaminated soils underneath that whole site.
Well, not that portion. Not that portion from the test.
They're not contaminated. They're, they're.
Well, unsuitable. There are unsuitable soils, but that's one of the other, that's one of the ways we save cost is by moving the, 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 the building, before it was closer to the intersection with Route 1. Now it's up the hill, right? As we move it up the hill, there are less of those soils. And so, and we're not digging the giant basement anymore. So yeah, we have included the cost for that though, for the, for.
Is this just a slab on grade without a basement whatsoever?
There is a partial basement because as, as the way the site is, you're going to end up with these big foundation walls. Might as well empty it out and put a basement in there. But it's only a partial basement and it's in, and I can put, let's see.
It's for mechanical space.
Right. So you can see that the site is going, let's see, it's going this way, right? It's going downhill. This is high, this is low. So as we get to this area here, there's a, you know, a fairly large area and we felt that instead of trying to fill that, we would allow that to be a basement. But as I said, we're trying to put the basement walls where we don't have the, the ballistic walls above it. Cause the ballistic walls end up being really wide. We don't have ballistic walls here because theoretically, there's nowhere to get there. Everything's fenced. This is fenced, you know, somebody that's in that field, you're going to know they're in that field pretty quickly. So these walls are not as, as robust, say, as these walls right in front of here. We have a, a basement area right in across here, out like that.
So we're in the mortise corner.
The mortise corner.
Just to clarify, I'm also civil engineer, just so.
Yep, we know. We appreciate your knowledge. Yeah. So, but we did include, we did include removal and, I don't understand why I say very well, removal and new soils in the cost estimate, right? Do you want to talk to that?
I think there was an allowance for a certain amount of cotton fill, but then there's also.
Do you want to just sit at the microwave, the microwave, the microphone? Because we have some counselors that aren't here. So I know that they're going to watch this back. They're going to want to hear it.
If I remember right, the, the estimate included like a two foot cut or fill over the whole site. But then there's also the excavation for the foundations that is included in the estimate as well. And most of those soils were in, you know, that we were worried about in the depths of that were in there. The, you know, generally speaking, if, if we have, say, a parking lot and, and it's got, you know, six feet of gravel underneath it and they called unsuitable because we don't really know what those soils are. They were there for a long time. I don't typically worry too much about that as far as, you know, being underneath a parking lot because we're going to put gravel on top of it anyway as long as the drainage is okay. So that wouldn't be something we would be taking out most of the time anyway.
So it's, so it's the area around the footprint?
Unless it was something that is, you know, you know, old logs or anything that's biodegradable or, you know, chunks of concrete that might cause a problem, work their way up into underneath of the, you know, pavement or something.
Can I assume that's the hundred, approximately $130,000 that I see under earthwork?
That's right.
Under mass excavation?
Give us a second to pull that up.
Sure.
So this is the last part of.
Let's have a look.
That's part of it, I think.
Yeah. So mass excavation, grade plus or minus 24 inches. So 10, 100,000 square feet, $150,000 is that, that's that mass excavation number.
We also have the backfill, trench and backfill for the foundations. We also, this mass, let's see.
Right. So those are fill, importing fill and structural fill. So it's a, it's a diff, that's bringing it in and the other one is taking it out.
Do you have another? I have lots of questions, but I wanted to know how far you want to talk me to talk to.
You're welcome to, yes.
Do you find those numbers not, no, I, I have to go follow the numbers. I think we're on track. My concern is, is the fact that we're going to stay.
Yeah. If you want to talk in the microphone, just because I know that we have counselors that are going to listen to this and I want to make sure that they can listen to it.
My concern is, I, this is the drawings from, this is the new ones.
Right. But it's, it's very similar to what was presented back in July?
May?
July, May, in July?
Was it May?
Except that that was, this is what was presented then. So this is, this is the new one. That one right there was what was presented.
Right.
Right. This one, if I'm correct, we, the council received it, but it hadn't been voted
on or approved yet. Is that a correct statement?
The one from May or June, July, whatever.
This is it. Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't know that you'd present that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But was there one that these were based on? Because it's, there was some reference to a plan of, of 816.
That's this plan. It was done August 16th. It's, it takes her a while to do a cost estimate. It takes two every week to get a cost. The only thing, as I said, this only difference with this plan from what you've seen previously is some eliminations of things that were comments that Penny had given me that had either come from the council or, I'm not sure where all that came from, but they were legitimate, you know, like this.
Number of bathrooms, that kind of thing. It's just, we haven't seen that is what I'm saying. Like whatever the 816 is, we don't have like the picture.
Uh, I think we sent you that, that was in the stuff I sent you a couple of weeks ago. I did send it to you.
I don't think I have anything from a couple of weeks ago.
I have plans.
I guess my question, I think it's the same thing that you're wondering too, but I think when we got the cost estimate back in May, when we got the original rendering for that back in May, the cost estimate was less than this by a couple million dollars. So I guess I'm curious to see where that jump came from.
Okay. So the reason.
When we're cutting stuff out of it.
Right. The reason it went up was we had developed the plans further, right? That was the direction we were going. So we developed the plans further. So we have wall sections, we have quantities that we were able to give to the professional cost estimator. Previously, she had based those numbers on, well, if we do these things, what do we end up with? You end up with this, right? Now it's like, okay, here's what we actually have. When we really look at this and we have, you know, areas of windows, areas of doors, areas of different, you know, materials. This, so this one is like, this is, you know, a much more detailed, much more up to date number. And that's why it went up. But the other part of it is some items just cost more in the, you know, as in the intervening months, which was not pleasant.
Next question. Back in February, there was a, the two story with a basement, full basement and the second floor, which I believe was like 11,200 square feet or something.
Yeah, that was that other plan. Yeah.
Right. Rather than cutting the basement, was there any discussion about reducing the size of the footprint and keeping it full basement?
There was. The problem, yeah, the problem, that's, that's a, that's a, see, that's a programmatic problem. That certain elements function better close together, right? And so when you try, it's one of the problems we always have with a two story facility for police especially. And it happens in fire stations too, is that it's not an equal, it's not equal quantities, right? If you're going to put a Sally port together, then you like to put it with the, the processing of your evidence and you need to put this with this. And if you, and so in trying to make that kind of thing work, that's how we came up with the 23,000 because the program for the, what wanted to be grouped together was greater than the stuff we were going to put in the basement.
Right. But some of that stuff on, some of that stuff on the first floor, like the larger conference room and things like that could have been deleted and the group could have shrunk the size of that footprint. Are there any of the?
We did that anyway.
Are there any, it's hard to tell because the footprint has increased again. So it just, it's just.
Well, the Sally port. The actual foot, see, the couple of things that we had in the basement, we had to have, right? We have to have a Sally port.
Of course.
That was the biggest one.
The Sally port was on the, on the main floor originally.
No.
It was.
In the, on the February drawings?
Yeah. It was on the main floor. But a lot of the locker room space, the personnel stuff, that all was in the basement.
The mechanical room was huge.
No, it wasn't. No, that's on the, that's on the.
Oh, you're right. Sally port.
There was a wash bay in the basement originally, the earlier.
Lockers and evidence.
Evidence was the one.
All the stuff could have been in the basement, which is where you put it, which was great.
Right.
And the mechanical room is ginormous. I'm not sure why it needs to be that big.
Well, again, because we, because programmatically, the stuff that was on the, so you could have a, you could have, there's a couple of these. One is an elevator, you're going to have to have an elevator.
Mm-hmm.
The elevator and the stairwell, those two things plus the structure to support that, that's about 300,000, 300,000. that's about 300,000, 350,000 dollars up there. So if we're trying to cut big numbers, that was like, that was one of the first ones that was like, yeah, cut. Because, because just by shrinking, like I said, just by shrinking some of those things, what might seem logical to go on one floor or the other, it really doesn't functionally work.
No, but if we changed the orientation of the building and had less site work on the east side and maybe put it more on the north side, we might be able to save somebody that.
Oh, man, we tried so many options, but we did try, we did try that.
We don't know what you tried.
Yes, I know.
That's our concern.
But there's only, there's only.
We cashed the big bucks.
There's only so many interim design sketches that we can do before we become at that endpoint where there isn't anything else that we can try that hasn't already been tried.
I mean, we knew what our goal was. Our goal was, you had approved a floor plan that included certain functional elements and you had a budget, right? That, and you had a, and you had approved the exterior appearance of the building, right? That building concept. So those were the three things we were working with. How do we get these functional elements in, for this cost, with this look on this site? And we tried a lot of different things. And we don't bring them to you because they don't necessarily work. If we had like two options instead of, well, we have this and we have this, we'd love to bring them to you. But we just kept working at it until we finally got to where we felt that we were at the right number for what you needed and what you wanted. And that's where we are with this. I mean, 'cause you can second guess this and you could try, there's a million, there's always a million plans. Like, if you hire five architects, you'll get five different plans, right? But we really have worked hard to get this with all the functional things at the cost. And we did look at, you know, shrinking it this way, shrinking it that way, putting this on the first floor, that.
A million, almost a million dollars.
Partly, you know, some of the things that we were doing on the site really worked well, putting it down at the bottom, right? We had that really nice clean division between what was, what was police access and police, you know, where they could come in and out and what was public. That was really cool on that location. So we liked that and we wanted to do that, but there was just, try as we, as we might, we couldn't make those, those functional requirements work on a two-story building that, you know, that would come in at the cost that we knew you had, that you had to spare.
Ellen, I was just looking at these Part C subtotal, the escalation and the total project cost.
Yes.
And I'm not coming up with those numbers, there's about, almost a million dollars difference. It's 13,155,085, and if you add them up, it comes to 12,196,85.
Let me see, that's on our project budget, not on the, on the construction budget, right?
This is right, yeah, on this one here, which would be great. Right there, that doesn't add up.
Put it at the back, where did it go?
Yeah. No, it doesn't.
Alright, so I'm. 'Cause I checked it three times, I was.
Those numbers are kind of confusing, the way that they add up, because one of the numbers comes from below, but it goes actually up to the top, so you're not adding it again?
Give an extra copy of that somewhere, I can take it. Alright, now what you're saying.
Right here.
This is the 515 one.
I, I come with a 13,155. Mine comes up to 13,155.
Oh, I didn't do.
Right here is 12,196,85.
I've got 13,155.
Are we looking at different?
I'm adding the Part A, the Part B, the design contingency and the escalation.
Yeah, it does, if you take the escalation, if you add Part A, B, C, and then the escalation.
Oh, okay, okay.
So what happened was escalation is usually in, the escalation cost is in the, is in the cost estimate, but to make it more clear to see that number, we took the number out of there that didn't include the escalation and put it in there under the construction and then show the escalation in our budget instead of in the cost estimate.
Right, right, right.
Okay, so those are not included in that, you have to, okay, alright.
But there are close to $2 million in contingency.
Yeah, okay.
Contingencies, when you add the numbers up from, but at this stage, that's, that's where we try to keep it.
I knew that was gonna be, I knew that was gonna be a question. But I had to see it in front of me. Yeah, the 427 was, was their escalation number on their construction costs, but I based all these other costs on a percentage of the probable construction cost without the escalation, then put the escalation in.
And then these two numbers up here have to go and they're not.
A plus B.
Yeah, they're, okay, A plus B plus C plus escalation is the 13 million.
Okay.
Plus the contingency.
Yeah, all of that. It's 97,5, 866,9, 11,762,942, 427,743. All of that adds up to 13 million.
Yeah, another question I have, I know Chief Associate had not a lot of things that he thought maybe could be done differently, but there were a couple, I don't know if these made it in, your suggestions made it in time for this presentation.
I know them, but I'm sure they were driving.
Okay, so. Yeah, I thought it might have been a recent development, so there may be a few things in addition to this.
Yeah, there's a few things, again, we're at a stage where we're still tweaking. We can tweak. If we get too much, I mean, we can tweak, we can't like.
Go back to the solution. I mean, we'd have to read, we, even if you dropped it to like 7,000 square feet, you still have 14,000 total square feet, that's not possible to get what everybody wants. There's nothing, I guess I wanna know, is there a difference between what we have to have and what we'd like to have that are currently in the floor plan?
Most of what you have there is what you have to have with some double purposing. I mean, there's a couple offices, right? You say, I don't need those, but then you probably do, you know? And you could double purpose some things, maybe a bunk room that could probably be used for some other, you know.
Well, that was one of the things that we thought, you know. Potentially eliminated.
Wait, she didn't know that yet?
I don't know, no, I don't, I mean, I would like to talk to you about that. I don't know that you wanna eliminate that. I mean, one of the things that we're seeing is that there's, you know, there's a, there's a horrible PTSD component to being a policeman, especially in an event that is not something we wanna experience, right? And so, and you never know what somebody's gonna experience when they go out. I mean, that's just the reality of that, of the profession. And so having someplace that they can come back to and chill is really important. The other thing is, you don't know when you're, when you have an event where you're gonna need people that are, that are on duty 24 hours for an extended period of time. And they're not gonna wanna go home, they're gonna wanna stay someplace where they can be, you know. So, but it's a room that also can be multipurpose, right? So you put a bunk in it and it be, and it can also have a nice lounge chair in it and a TV. It can be something else when it's not that. It's not a big space, I mean, it's a 12 by 12 space. So there are, that's what, when you're asking what's needs versus what's required. That's one of those spaces that I kinda feel like it's required. My experience from, you know, working with other stations says it's required. You don't feel like you require it, but you might, you feel like you might like to have it and it's, you know, that 10 score feet is not gonna, or 100 score feet, that's not gonna make the difference in this project. There's some things, you know, that maybe some finishes, we can say, well, we don't really need that level finish. I mean, if you're comfortable with the fact that we've got a, maybe a security fence in front of the entrance, the police entrance, it's not ballistic, but it's a security fence. Maybe you don't want the ballistic glass behind that, you feel good about that. I mean, you know, Augusta made a lot of those kind of compromises. They eliminated a lot of ballistic glass, right? And ballistic wall protection. If you wanna eliminate that, that will save you huge numbers of dollars because it, it telegraphs to other parts of the building. We feel like that's a necessity, we feel like it's really important, but in the end, you guys are the client and you make those decisions. But we feel right now where we are is a really good solution that gets us right there in the ballpark and covers all the bases. I mean, we don't see, you know, anything else that we see is an unforeseen, that happens is an unforeseen, but that's what that extra $2 million is for.
Assuming that the council wants to move forward with this, we are still $2 million over budget. What, what can we do?
Well, as I said, over $2 million of it is contingency, so you do have that. I mean, the, the, the budget for what we know is actually less than $2 million because even the contingencies get other factors. They get, yeah, you know, there's factors, like when I figure out what the overhead profit is, that becomes, the contingency gets worked into that. If the contingency is not spent, then the overhead profit number, you know, 10% of that goes away to the contractor too. The number in this estimate that's for the contractors' general conditions is huge. I don't know how much, anybody hear a contractor? The, the number is for a full-time project manager, a full-time project engineer and a.
Two of them are administrative.
And a full, a half-time administrator and a.
A contractor.
Yes.
On the side of the contractor. And, yeah, a full-time project manager, a full-time project engineer, which is like the next level, and full-time support and obviously full-time supervision. But those are huge numbers and my experience is that we don't get that from the contractor. And so that's a part of negotiation that I would like to see when, when, when we get to the place of hiring a contractor, that that gets negotiated, because those numbers total like a million dollars right there. And again, that's got factors applied to that, right? So I know there's enough money in here to get you down to $10 million, but it's a question of, again, we tweak it from here going forward.
It's my experience that even if the contractor had those people, they're not necessarily gonna be on site. They'll be back in the office somewhere, wherever their home office has to be and they'll probably have, and they'll definitely have some people on site, of course.
Yeah, but I mean, I've talked, every project manager I've talked to, I've said, how many projects do you have? Three or four? So how do they work for, they're not working 120 hours a week or 160 hours a week, right? So I know that that's a number that gets applied that's not real. And the project engineer, maybe, that guy's running around answering all the questions. The superintendent, definitely, you gotta have a superintendent there 40 hours a week, right? But, so there's a bunch of numbers like that. There's also numbers that we threw in that were factors that we just use to, to ensure that there is some kind of a budget number there for things. There's also a million dollars, it's a million, no, it's not quite that much. There's, I forget how much the generator is. 200,000? Yeah, so now that, typically we find that there are grants for those. And so, and again, the 200,000 is one of those factors that ends up being like 250,000. Pretty much everything that's a line item, as you can see, 'cause right, you start with a construction cost of, oh, I gave you back my number. If you start with a construction cost of 10 million, you end up with 13 million, right? So that's 30% more. Pretty much any line item that you change, you save that plus 20%. Not 30% necessarily, but 20%.
I noticed that the reimbursables that you discussed in the letter didn't end up on the sheet, so that I swiveled down the, on the thin bit. You've meant to about five grand, something like that, reimburseals, just didn't end up on the sheet.
Our, oh, our, our reimbursables for travel.
That's the main one.
Yeah, no, it's not, I didn't choose any. Sorry, I apologize.
And anyway, also, the clerk of the works, if it, my experience, the been a full-time person, would you recommend a part-time person in the town?
Yeah, I would.
For the city?
Because again, that's another one of those where, I mean, it just gets really frustrating because we've had clerk of the works that showed up for the monthly meeting and I can guarantee you, they came to the site a few times a week and wrote a, you know, a letter that were like eight guys working, this was going on, this was going on, and left.
We run a tight ship here.
Right, right.
Three days is good. They come on Tuesday, I mean, they come Tuesday, they spend a couple hours Tuesday, they spend all day Wednesday, a couple hours Thursday, and they're gone. You, you get as much out of them then as you do if they're here every day. It's my experience, because again, unless you've got a really, unless you've got Penny doing.
Clerk of the Works over to our school project.
Right.
Comparing apples and oranges, I apologize, but he was there 50-plus hours a week.
And he must have taken 2,000 pictures a week.
Easily.
So, I mean, that, if you got.
That's our, that's our standard though.
That's your standard, it's fabulous.
Yeah, that's been a standard, as our standard of what a clerk of the work needs to be.
So, and also, I don't know what you guys are gonna pay for him. I have a $200 an hour guy. You had said at one point, well, $100 an hour.
Plus lodging and buying.
Well, which I also kind of include in that, in that. So I think that's enough money, I don't think you need half a million dollars for that. I think, you know, when I have 250, 300,000, I think.
175, yeah.
So I, I think that that's okay, but, but that's been my experience, that a lot of the times, of course, a lot of the times, these projects, the person that pays for the, the clerk of the works is like the bank or the bonding, you know, they want. And, and they're bankers and they don't even know what they're looking at half the time, except they know the dollar numbers. So it really depends on who you get.
That's not what we're looking for, I don't believe it's what we're looking for. We want someone who's, who's gonna be pretty much.
So, I mean, it's a question of, of, you know. And if you can find somebody local, that'd be the best, right? Then you don't have to pay those other fees. But, so I think we're, like I said, I think we're definitely within shooting range because we're at the $6 million construction number. And that's the, that's the hardest one to get down. Everything else is dependent on that. Six, 10 million, I'm reading the 600,000, 10 million. So I think, you know, everything else is dependent on that. If we can get that down, as I said, there's a few things to get down, we'd like to work with you on that. But I think that comes through the design development. Also, the $2 million worth of contingency changes as we get through the development. So as we know more, a lot of that contingency goes away, right? We go from 10% to 5%. Why? Because we now know more things and we know that we don't need all 10%, right?
Or that 10% is absorbed, or 5% is absorbed into the cost of the construction.
It could be.
It could be for stuff that you haven't.
Thought about, right? It could be, it could, it's either way, but that's why we start with a bigger number, because, and oftentimes, you know, one'll stay at 10 and the other one will go to nothing, right? Because we've worked through the, and as we work through the cost estimates and through the stages, as I said, we're at design development, after that, construction documents. When we're done with construction documents, one of those contingencies is gonna go away 'cause we have all the documents we're drawing to, to back up what the cost should be. We still keep the other one because it's a construction contingency. So one's a design contingency, what we don't know now when we're drawing, the other one's a construction contingency, what we don't know while we're building. But, I mean, I think that's where these, you know, that's why I'm not afraid of these numbers 'cause my experience tells me those, we can get those, we can get those down through just the finish of design development as we discuss, yeah.
Is the city comfortable with, have a basement? You have a basement, you have crosswalls, full-depth crosswalls, like 68 feet?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, but we're only excavating the northeast corner for the mechanical room.
That's right.
There's no lawyer at it, just, no, figure this out.
It's not, yeah, I mean, we're talking.
Structurally, it becomes a lot more complicated and a lot more expensive. The cost of concrete like doubles, not the cost, but the quantity. The steel, everything.
Does it have a concrete floor?
Between the first floor and the basement, is there a concrete floor or is that just regular?
In the basement part?
The two-story version that we had?
I mean, in this two-story version, the floor of the first floor, the ground floor.
Was concrete?
Yes.
Is concrete all the way through, not just at the Sally port, it's concrete all the way across.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
By the time you, you do the, you know, the footings and everything that you need for, to support the masonry walls that are ballistic, it doesn't make a lot of sense to not do a concrete floor, 'cause concrete is essentially cheaper, you know, than trying to frame something.
So the other thing is.
When you're talking to Slavon Gray, we're talking, if you completely had it out the basement, you would put a concrete floor over that whole basement.
Yeah, we would. So the thing is, that when you're dealing with a police station or a fire station, hospital, you're dealing with a, a higher level of construction, right? We're dealing with the highest level of construction, because if all else fails, you better have a police station, a fire station, even a hospital, right? Because if you don't have those, then. Anarchy, right? So, so that's, that's the reason that a lot of this is so expensive. And then we're adding that extra layer of protection, 'cause we wanna protect the guys inside it, not just, you know, protect the building. So, it, it's just, it, you know, we, we have to meet a higher standard for. So, it, it's just, it, you know, we have to meet a higher standard for lateral loads, we have to meet a higher standard for, for the actual stability of the building. And we, it just, it's a, it's a, it's strong, it's not going anywhere. You're going to build this, and it's going to last 7,500 years. And that's the whole idea. You don't want to do this again. But I would suggest that you just tell us to go. We know what your number is, we're still working towards that, but if we stall anymore, all that's going to happen is the cost is going to get more. And we can keep going, and we can work at this and get it to the number you need, but if we don't, we'll never get it. If we don't just say, "This is it, yes, go," we'll never get it to it.
You're here.
Counselor Lovell, you had a question?
I do, and I, I can't really, I'm sorry, the, the pictures are small from my vantage point, my eyes are bad, getting older. Yeah, I'd actually take it up here if, if I can. So I know there were some questions before about line of sight with the holding cells, did that get addressed?
Well, the question was, could we do away with certain things if we had line of sight for the, for the holding cells?
From the, because you have to have it from dispatch, right? Is that correct? And is that fixed on this rendition?
Well, ideally, you don't want to have that from dispatch, you want to have some guy at dispatch that just does that, and some guy that...
That's ideal.
That's ideal. But the other thing is, we don't do, we don't do physical, like, surveillance anymore. We do...
Oh, video.
Video.
At some, some point, we do, because if, if they fall into a certain category, then we have to do actual 15-minute checks where we need to go to the cell.
Right, right. But you have to go. So it doesn't, you know, if you have to walk 20 feet or 10 feet, you have to go to the cell. But the rest of the time, you're on video surveillance. So whether you can see them, ideally, you, you're, you know, we're, that's how we've...
So Chief, do you need that dispatch to be within eyesight of the holding cells?
It needs to be as close as possible.
Are you, okay...
I haven't seen those planes. In the event of emergency, you want to be able to get from dispatch to that cell quickly.
Right, in case something's happening.
And I think that we have other local, and I don't know the details, but stations that are not able to use their cells because of this very issue, with not being close enough proximity.
But you're, you're not, these aren't long-term holding, right? They're just, I mean, they're, they're holding cells 24 hours.
He might want to look at them.
72.
He might want to see that. So is it possible, and I don't know, and I don't want to, like, cause a whole lot of issues, but is it possible to switch the canteen area with the duty area?
So I think this is probably about as far as it was before. It's about, let me see what we got here. It's about 20 feet, 25 feet. I mean, it looks bigger, but it's about 25 feet. It's a straight shot, you just go from here, there. You're not going to go back.
But I think right now, we just need to get this back in place so we can, so we need to get on this part.
This is what I meant would happen. We've got like 50 people, no one knows what one hand is doing, rather than just have our committee.
But, yes, Manager Thompson. So I know that this is not going to land well, but, so we have, the, the design is very pretty, but what options would we have to maybe, instead of having the middle part...
Yep, we talked about that.
Coming, yeah, coming down and maybe having kind of a regular shape.
So we could do, we could do like a gable that came off that was like the, that was like the, the, right, just went through, just a gable. It would just be simple, and it would save you some money. We have looked at putting air handling equipment in that space up in the back section of it, because you are probably not going to get everything in the basement, you are going to need some air handling equipment. We can put it out on the site, it's not as safe, and it's not as resilient, you know, the equipment's better protected. So that's the one thing that we thought, but we have thought of lowering that central section and just having a high gable through, and we're looking at that, actually, that was one of our thoughts. So it's not like, I mean, we're, we're thinking about it.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, I know that you want it to be, and listen, I love a pretty building, I mean, that's, that, but I also think, we have, one of the things when we had the committee was, we had a member of the committee saying, like, you know, we're, it's going to be heated space up there, you know, is it, we're going to have to wash the windows, it's going to be, you know, who's going to be doing that? You know, there was, there was a lot of discussion in one of the meetings about just the volume in that area that we were heating and cooling and cleaning, that maybe, if we compacted that, but still found a way to make the building, you know, look interesting, but maybe, if you're going to have mechanical equipment, does that mean we're going to be transitioning to more of a flat roof up there?
No, 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 that would be in that...
So don't be a problem, you talk about...
It's like a mezzanine inside.
So we may be using a mezzanine space in that raised area, so, but we, but we, as I said, we've talked about lowering it and maybe, you know...
Taking some of the side windows off.
That's still, that's still what we're working on, and I think will save you some money there.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, you know, maybe if we, that might be a way to...
Yeah, it is.
And also, just the, the maintenance part, too, which was something that...
Well, I think we're getting rid of those side windows. I think those are expensive, and I think those are, that's another, you know...
Up in the, what's, how do you...
Clear story.
Clear story, I'm thinking, how do you pronounce that? Clear story, okay. So you're talking the side windows up in the clear story, as opposed to just the front ones?
The front, right. I think we can get rid of those. We, we want to get light into the center, because it's a big box, right? And, you know, if you're going to work there all day, you know the experience working in the basement, it's just not, you know, so we want to get some light in there. But I don't know that it has to be as grand, and that's what we're looking at, yeah. So we've got, I mean, the big thing for us is getting these wall sections correct, making sure that we're protecting, we've got the ballistic protection and the materials and all that, and then looking at the costs of that. But some of the volumetric stuff, we can, we still can play with. Like I said, we're in a place where we're playing right now, we're tweaking. This is a tweak for us, you know, if we can save some money that way, we're going to do it.
Same thing for the, like, the veneer on the, on the Fort Street side.
Yeah, on the Fort Street, we have exposed veneer there. We're looking at, maybe we can do the exposed concrete and do something else besides veneering it, because that veneer is expensive, and we have...
There's a lot of money in veneer.
It is a lot of money. And it, and we have to make the foundation bigger as a result, because it has to sit on something, right? It has to have a foundation.
The foundation walls are 18 inches thick. Why?
Pardon?
The foundation walls are 18 inches thick.
Because we have that veneer, and they're supporting the veneer in, in the cases where they're, where the veneer is above the ground, and the foundation keeps going, you have to support that veneer so that the wall...
Okay, so you've built out an extra, yeah, 12 inches.
And the blocks are fairly wide, too.
I thought it was just like something you take, sort of, nails and slap it on the side.
The walls are solid block, they're block, they're solid grounded, you know, that's like, so that's sitting on a, on a concrete tube. I mean, it's a, it's a very...
Can you say that again? The walls are solid concrete.
Yes, but the, but the walls above, in the station, are CMU, and they're solid grounded. So that concrete has got to support that CMU, and they're not necessarily, in some cases, they're 10-inch wall, 10-inch blocks, because they're fairly high, right? And so then we've got that concrete underneath that, and then underneath the veneer, and then, so that's why I say, that's why the basement got expensive, is when you had those kind of walls that weren't going down six feet, they were going down 14 feet.
Does it need to be 14 feet? Can't be less than that.
The basement? Well, that's where you, that's, well, again, it's the same thing, right?
We're going back and forth. I, it just, it pains me as an engineer not to have a full foundation doing here.
I know, I know, you just need to have a full basement.
I mean, in one of the cost estimates, we shrunk the 14 feet floor-to-floor to 12, and, and it didn't save, I mean, we had our cost estimate, we looked at that and how much that would save, didn't save a significant amount.
I mean, we, we have been working at this, we have really been working at this.
It, it's also difficult to present something that doesn't include what they already have, for example, garage space and a wash bay. So that's, that's difficult as well.
Garage space, I know, I know, in, in this sense, garage space in a basement seems logically the best and the most efficient way to use the space, but a separate garage from this might actually be a lot cheaper per square foot than, than what you have.
And you have plenty of space for it.
You have plenty of space for it.
Can we maybe think about that? Now, can I ask you, is this, is this stone veneer going all the way around the building?
Uh, pretty much.
So is there a way to do the frontage and do something different, just simple on the sides and the back?
Well, on the one side, we're not doing so much.
And throw the money at a garage?
Right, yes, yes.
I like it.
And again, you look at that, because that will save you money. The stone veneer is expensive, because, like I said, it adds the foot.
I mean, it looks pretty, it'll look great on the front, but I don't know whether you necessarily need it.
Oh, the other thing about the basement, we had to sprinkle that entire basement, even the storage space, even the unused space, and that was adding a lot of cost. And ventilation, because the new codes require ventilation. So when we had to ventilate and sprinkle spaces that were, were just like for storage or for like garage space or whatever, that's really expensive. And that's why we said, you know, you build a metal building garage, like, on the site, you can get all those things there for a lot less money.
Well, it would still have to be weather tight, because we can't have...
Yeah, well, yeah, because it's not going to rain inside, but it's not going to have sprinklers.
Rain, I meant, I meant, a garage, be used as a wash bay all year round.
Right, right.
It's got to be heated.
It's got to be heated, but you don't have to do the ventilation the same way that you have to do with this occupied, you know, occupied building.
But that's going to add to our cost, I mean, even that's...
So that was, that was a big piece of the cost, and that was one of the big reasons why the basement was starting to sound more, you know, less and less ideal.
You're not putting a full foundation under it, at least. There's a full foundation under this thing.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
Full-depth crosswalls.
Yeah, 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 we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it any other way.
I mean, we were with you in the beginning, and that's why we went to the, the two-story option, but then, you know, as we got looking at it more and more, it was just, it was just, you know, no...
I mean, sometimes things seem like a good idea until the practicality, the cost, and the cost.
Are there any further questions from the counselors?
I guess, just one, and that goes back to the veneer. Can you, do the walls have to be as thick then, if you don't have veneer all the way around?
No, we could do metal, we could do a metal panel, and then, like, you know, we can do...
So that would save some concrete cost on that, too?
We can do like a, like a, you know, stucco kind of finish or something.
That's what I was thinking, stucco would be...
Yeah, sounds like high maintenance.
I've actually seen, God, had a form on the concrete, I mean, to hook it off, it looked like brickwork or stonework or whatever, but that's also expensive, so...
Yeah, we've done that with precast concrete. I mean, you could do precast panels that I think might be more expensive, but, but those can hang off of the concrete as opposed to being supported, well, I mean, we, we can look at some other things. I mean, you know, we can look at, I, I don't want to do the fake veneer stuff, you know, the...
The liquid nails.
Because it's not as resilient, and, and, you know, so, but we can, we can look at it. I do think you should keep some of the stone, I mean, I definitely think some of that stone in the front, but maybe as we go around on the Fort Street side, it's up pretty high in your eye, you know, like, that's why we were saying, maybe we just have the concrete there and not veneer on that backside. Maybe we can do something with coloring the concrete and finishing it in a way that's...
And you have to be set back quite a ways, and there's quite a slope there, you could plant some vegetation there, you can hide the look of whatever concrete is there if you're not going to really...
So there's, but there are a lot of ways we can save. I think we're right there, I really do. I think anything that slows us down at this point, puts us, you know, gives us a detour, is going to cost more money in the end. I think if you, you know, like I said, we've been with you guys for seven years, we've been, we've been working at this, we will, we will, and again, we're not charging you more for doing this, we're working, we're working on your behalf to get you what you need and what you want, and what you can afford.
What can we, what we can afford.
The building on the site is configured so that it can be added on to, or, or a fire station at some point in time could be added to it.
This was important to us.
And that the interior circulation would function.
But this side, this can keep going, right? That was important to us, whether it's City Hall or the new fire station, or whatever, you know, that, that possibility, we didn't want to close that on, and that's a part of why...
New fire station, I'll be dead and buried.
There are enough doors there for life safety. Yes, see, it's a, it's definitely a... The biggest load is, I have to look right, it's down here with the 100, you've got the, you know, I think we added a, a door here at the bunk room, and I think we have...
There's one on the site, on the side where the elevation is dropping, so we, we actually had to add a stair on the outside there to access the mechanical space and lower. So that door isn't...
It's in the right place, yeah. Yeah, Aaron's got it working. Yes.
It looks like, with everything that I've heard here, we're still a ways away from getting anything finalized. What is the drop-dead date as far as construction, of when you want to start construction? What, what is the drop-dead date of when you want to start construction or have this completed? 2025?
That would be the plan, but, you know, right now, I think we need to just, we're still trying to figure out the preliminaries here on this, Mr. Hacalstein.
But the longer...
Yes.
You've discussed this stuff, let me tell you, everything is going up.
Right.
Yeah, I think we're ready, yeah, forward, yeah.
You need, you need to make some decisions. I witnessed this with the school, when, when it was talked about so forth. Make a decision.
Oh, yeah, we're, yeah, we're ready to make a decision, for sure.
So our, our goal is to get this, this out on the street in December.
For bidding.
For bidding, so that you get your contractor lined up, so that when, you know, the, the ground is thawed, they got, they start working, they could, they've already, they're mobilized and ready to go. That's, that's been our goal, and that's, again, why we, you know, but we have worked really hard to make it, get to your budget. And I, and I know you say, "Well, it's above our budget." It is, but it's, this is, from my perspective, from what I understand about what I can do, this is, this is going to make it.
You'd rather be high now than hide later, obviously.
That's right.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
You'd not like to be a little bitter, I can tell you that.
For sure.
So I understand your point on that.
All right, is there any further questions or anything of that nature? I think we should think about moving forward, if you folks don't have anything further. Questions from the council, I mean. Thank you both for coming up all this way to present, we really appreciate that.
I do have some plans, a couple, three sets that are up to date.
Oh, great, that would be great, yes.
Perfect.
So can I ask, like, to his point, when are you going to make a move on this?
Yeah, we're, we're going to work on that right now. We have some thoughts, so...
I'm going to tell you right now, I do not... The August ones, I don't have them.[1685.12]
I mean.
Right now.
I, I don't have them.
Okay, whoops, sorry. Um, excuse me, everybody. I think we're getting a little out of order here. So right now, this discussion is between the council members. Um, so if I could just have the audience kind of hold off, that would be really helpful. Is there anyone from the council who would like to share any thoughts?
Well, I would. Um, listening to this presentation and knowing things are going up. I feel that we're at the critical stage right now and one of the things that we have to do is we've got to reinstate that safety building committee. And we have to do it immediately because we cannot sit here next month and the month after and back and forth, back and forth, and add a couple of hours to our, our city council meeting and absolutely come up with nothing. The committee does the work. We meet with Jan. We meet with the police officer. We find out what we need. We take in information from them. And anybody from the council that wants to sit in on the meeting, they can. It's just that we cannot have them as part of the committee because we cannot have more than three on the committee. But I think we need to take a vote tonight to reestablish this committee, put it back into play and have a meeting as soon as possible, come up with what we can come up with as far as cost, the cost effectiveness. Meet with Jan to see what we need to do and not do. And then we can present this to the council and then give it to Ellen. And hopefully, if we get this done by the end of the year, we will be on track for 2025. And I, right now, would like to make a motion that we reinstate that safety buil- building committee. And, um, and then go from there and start our work back up again so that we can get going on this. So that's my motion.
I second it.
So I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm gonna vote on it, obviously, but I just want to add my two cents and that is, you know, obviously, as council people, we can come to the meetings, but we don't really have a voice in those meetings. And that was one of the reasons that we voted the committee down because we feel that this is a huge project and we want to have our voices heard. We want to be part of this project. It is a huge project for this whole city. It's very important. And as you can see, we all have a vested stake at making sure that this is done right. And not to say, you guys have done an amazing job. You've had all the hours. We, we have no intention, I know that I'm speaking for a lot of people, of taking any of the credit for what's been done at this point. But that being said, as, you know, very vested council people, we want to have our voices heard and be able to lend information and be able to say, hey, this is something I see that needs to be worked on. And you, we can't do that if we're not part of this.
Can I clarify something though for you? That's not really true. Yes, you wouldn't be necessarily participating actively in the meeting, but you can certainly come to us and say, hey, I heard this at the meeting. I have this suggestion. There is nothing to say, you cannot bring your suggestions forward and have them heard by the committee, not at all. That's why we would invite you to come.
And that's what we were taught, we talked about is that you come and you sit in on the committee meeting, jot down your thoughts. And then when we meet with the council and, or even before, if you want to, you bring your thoughts to the, the whole council.
So I will say that I've done that previously and I'm gonna just say, I'm gonna leave this here. I've done that previously. And I think for fear of having ideas be accepted that weren't the ideas of the committee, they were just overlooked and not heard. And that was one of the reasons that I hesitated in having a committee in the first place because I didn't feel that I had any participation in just having my input. And it's important that I do. Um, however, I don't feel like this is gonna go move forward without having some direction. And I, I'm going to go ahead and vote, um, for the committee to be reinstated today because I feel like this needs to move forward. Um, I don't want the cost to continue to go forward.
And I think there was, you know, clearly today, just in this presentation, it was illustrated why we need a committee because we have a chief over here who hasn't really been able to give the input. And his input was not received by the architects because then we have Mrs. Merterson, who's spent a lot of time on this, coming to the committee meetings before as a citizen. And I think everything is very disjointed. And I think if we were able to have our committee in place, we'd all be in one place, meeting, talking these things through so that it's not everyone trying to filter all of their questions, comments and concerns through Manager Thompson. It's not working.
But I am going to implore the committee to listen to other council people, um, as very vested people, not in, vested in taking any credit for what's been done, um, but vested in the city and, um, moving the project forward and, um, and really just making sure that, you know, we, we have eyes to maybe look at things freshly because as anybody knows, sometimes you just see things differently. So, um, again, we, we, I know, I'm speaking for Jen. I'm speaking for Jen, but we both really, really, really want to see the police department built. It was one of the important things for both of us. That's.
That was my number one thing.
It was, and it is. And so we both want to see it built. We know you guys have worked really hard. We want to give you guys all huge kudos for that. Um, and yeah, let's just get it done.
Yep. All right. Any further discussion?
Nope, that's everything.
All right. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So as this committee is reinstated and newly reinstated, I think, um, you know, that would mean that we would go back out to say, anyone interested in being on the committee needs to reach out to me and then I'll be able to, to look that over. So anyone with an interest, please send me an email.
Okay.
All right.
We're gonna continue to work on the project the way we have been because this is not gonna get done otherwise. So we have, as I said, we've contracted with the mechanical electrical engineers. We're gonna look at that. We're gonna, you know, again, reevaluate everything. But we would like, as soon as you have the committee together, to get some kind of a Zoom meeting or something so we can discuss all the issues and make sure we're all in the same age. And Chief, again, I, you know, love to talk to you anytime there's an opportunity so we can, you know, because we want you to be, we want the budget to be met, but we also want you to be very happy.
Thank you so much. We'll be in touch. Okay, item number 11A is the approval of business licenses. This is on page forty of your packet.
So on that one, I copy your page, so it's, it's, don't use that one.
Okay. Okay, so this one is a Mr. John Fulton requesting permission to conduct business as a pawnbroker and dealer in secondhand articles. These licenses in the city of Caribou require council permission per the charter found in Article Three Peddlers and Hockers, Section Seven dash two oh one. Do we know, um, what more do we know about this?
It's already gone through, oh, I believe Penny was taking care of it.
It's allowable in that zone and all of that. That's what we checked for, you know, code enforcement.
All right. What are the wishes of the council?
I move to accept, um, where are we at here? I've gotta switch the wording. The request for, who are we? Mr. Fulton, Mr. John Fulton? To have the license to conduct business as a pawnbroker and dealer.
And is this for a term of thirty days or is this, okay. This is, okay, got it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, I know, I was making these two, but I got this. We got it.
Honestly, Danielle's being too kind. I think that she actually sent me an updated one and the wrong one got in the packet, so.
That's okay. We had it all taken care of. Okay. Item number eleven B is a, this is an election memo for the November fifth, twenty twenty four general municipal elections. Um, so we do need to approve a couple of things for the election. One was, is the approval of an eight AM opening time for the November fifth, twenty twenty four election. And the second would be the appointment of Danielle Bursette as election warden, Christina Drinkle and Michelle Wilcox as deputy wardens for the November, November fifth, twenty twenty four election. So what are the wishes of the council?
Move to set the start time as eight o'clock AM and to appoint Danielle Bursette as election warden, Christina Drinkle and Michelle Wilcox as deputy wardens for the November fifth, twenty twenty four elections.
Second it. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item number eleven C is a grant submission discussion and that also needs city council approval. And it looks like we have three different things to take a look at here on, starting on pages forty six of your packets. Penny, I'm gonna let you go ahead and take it away.
Department of Economic and Community Development is soliciting applications to its Brownfields revolving loan fund program for cleanup loans and grants at Brownfields properties throughout Maine. Along with its technical partner, the main Department of Environmental Protection, Brownfields program, the DECD B R L F program will fund the cleanup of a number of Brownfield projects, preparing the sites for re, for reuse. Applications are being accepted through Friday, September twentieth. A panel of staff from both agencies will review all applications, choosing those that best meet the criteria. They anticipate that the winners will be informed by Friday, October eighteenth. This year, there is no match for the funding. EPA does require that more than fifty percent of the total funds issued by the program will be in the form of a loan. So DECD will generally prioritize projects requesting at least fifty percent of the funding as a loan. The B R L F program is able to provide attractive terms for loans. A municipality or nonprofit may request grant and loan funds. An applicant may request up to five hundred thousand dollars per source, grant or loan. They may consider a higher request based on a project by project basis. Representatives from EPA and DEP visited the Brownfield sites in Caribou in August and have encouraged the city to apply for this funding. They have also suggested that we apply for another cleanup grant this fall. If that grant is awarded, those proceeds could pay off any loan portion that we are awarded. Typically, the award is for fifty percent grant, fifty percent loan. The Bird's Eye site has been acquired by the city of Caribou through the automatic lien foreclosure process and has been identified by the city council as an ideal location for the new police station and future business center. We are in the process of gathering information, but it is area of concern number five, the remediation of PCB soils at Bird's Eye that we would want to clean up with these funds. The estimate in two thousand seventeen was thirty-three thousand dollars. The city council would still need to accept the grant funds and loan term if awarded. Note, there is sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents remaining in G one dash three seven three dash twenty, which was from USDA after the sale of sixty access highway that could also be used to pay off this loan as well.
My only question would be, are we able to, when would we know if we got the grant?
Um, October eighteenth is what they anticipate that they will be informed by.
But is that the loan power? It's all one thing?
It's all one together. The whole thing together.
Okay, all right. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to me, uh, move to authorize staff to apply for a twenty twenty four DECD Brownfields revolving loan fund program loan and grant.
Second it. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I do have a question. Um, can you, can you apply for this for other things also or is it only one thing?
No, if we had other Brownfield sites that we were cleaning up.
I was thinking of the Water Street property. If we acquired that property, could we use that as a Brownfield site? I know this is off the subject, but back on, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so the definition of a Brownfield would be like a property whose prior use was limiting future use. So I would have to check with them to see if the fact that it's burnt down was enough of a.
But it's right on the river is what makes me think that might qualify.
I don't know, but great suggestion. Yeah, it's a great suggestion.
Just have to wait until.
Usually you're looking at things, you know, that they had a business there that was the potential for contamination there that would limit future reuse. Um, could there be a case made that the contamination here came from its use as fire material? Like, you know, I, I don't know, but we can definitely ask because we are hounds for that kind of thing. You know, we're always looking for ways to fund projects, so never had even thought of that, but it's a great idea. I'm gonna make a note.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an efficiency main.
Oh, you gotta vote.
Oh, my goodness, we didn't even vote. All right, let's get back to this then. Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So the second one, you know, is not, I guess, as easy a sell as that one. I mean, um, which is one of the things that Karen and I worked on this a couple of years ago because, again, efficiency main had a program to install level two electric vehicle chargers in regional service communities like Caribou. So this program would pay the lesser of ten thousand dollars per port or eighty thousand dollars of the cost to install. And you have to have a minimum of four ports. So currently, Caribou does not have a location for a publicly accessible charger for EV vehicles. Users would pay for the electricity using a credit card on a panel display. We were given two estimates from Eric McHugh of Energy Management Consultants who worked on the level three charger project in Van Buren. Each quote is for four charging points, charging ports at the Wellness Center at fifty-five minute drive. They obtained estimates from an electrical contractor. We would ask that it be put up to bid to allow our local contractors to submit a bid for installation work as both of our local commercial electrical firms gave us bids the last time that we looked into obtaining efficiency main grant funds to install level two EV chargers. The reason why I didn't move forward before was it was just too much money, um, to do. Because they were telling us that it was gonna, like, for like, what, three grand, we were gonna get four chargers. But it, that's just not a thing. So, um, we have two different types. Um, there's a four hundred amp pan- panel, which was for a quicker charge. The two hundred amp panel is a slower charge. And he did get back to me today and I have that printed off here. Uh, maybe I didn't. I got too much paper today. Um, I think it wa, oh, here we go. So, um, eighty amp chargers would be, would add roughly seventy-five miles an hour to a car. The forty amp chargers would add roughly thirty-five miles to a car in an hour. So if they were hooked up to the, if we installed the four hundred amp, then the car would plug in and for every hour they were plugged in, it would add seventy-five miles. Two hundred would be the thirty-five. So, and it says these times will vary depending on the size of the car's battery and the number of miles needed to add. So, um, so where would we get the money from the, for this? Um, there are remaining ARPA funds, which must be committed by twelve thirty-one that could be used for this project. The hope is that by getting on Maine's EV charging maps, more visitors would stop in Caribou, visited, visit our businesses. The location would also make it convenient for those working on Bennett Drive or visiting the Wellness Center or Teak Park.
How much do we still have in ARPA funds? Do you know?
Can I email you that?
Yes, of course. Sorry to ask you that question right off.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
It seems like there's quite a disparity in the grant amount versus the city match from the four hundred amp to the two hundred. I don't understand that.
Well, that's because there is a limit of ten thousand per port.
Got it, okay.
So it's the lesser of eighty percent or ten thousand.
And the ARPA money can be used for various other projects, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things you can use that for, like for resilience, different resiliency things. You can use it for, um, premium pay for first responders. You can use it to upgrade, you know, buildings, that kind of. A lot of it is resiliency type measures. So if we ever found ourselves in another pandemic type situation, that our community would be better able to handle that.
That must be committed by.
It's gotta be committed by twelve thirty-one. And I, is this a rolling grant, Karen? I can't remember.
Yes.
Yeah.
The sooner you apply, the more chances.
Yeah. But I know you only have four people here too, so if it's not something you feel comfortable, you know about, that's fine too.
It's not, I don't know. It's not that I don't feel comfortable. I just.
I don't know.
I don't see the need for it here.
That's hard too. I'm just saying, we bring things because we have opportunities and, you know, some things are gonna be thumbs down.
That was what I was going to say. I think.
It's spent somewhere else.
You know, knowing, uh, you know, where our budget has been and what we're trying to accomplish to bring some things down costs. I don't think that we want to maybe invest in this right now. I don't.
I wonder though, if we have a ton of ARPA funds that we're not gonna use, like.
like $8,000 of our ARPA funds would be nothing just to have something here.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, it's slow.
We'll find lots of places to spend our ARPA funds.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I'm just not sure where we can use them. That's what I'm asking, that kind of question.
I think we want to put that on the agenda for me.
Maybe just think about it later.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know that a lot of people have these kind of cars, but they might. I know that they're really pushing them and giving lots of incentives for them, but... Up north, I'm not sure that a lot of those are gonna buy them.
People have a harder time.
I'm getting an electrical... I'm sorry.
So for the next meeting, if we put that on the agenda for the next meeting, which I think we should, maybe we could also brainstorm or if you could think of some ways that the ARPA funds would be applicable. That would be great. Just to kind of get the discussion going. That would be really great.
Yeah. So on this, do you want to table it? Do you want to take a vote on it?
I'm comfortable taking a vote on it. Me, too.
Somebody will need to make a motion.
If we don't make the motion, then...
Okay.
We'll just let go of him.
Okay. We can do that. I didn't think we could do that, but okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's no action.
Okay, no action. No action taken.
Yeah. So the next one is an MBRC grant that we are working on and wanted to provide an update and the next steps after receiving the final notice to proceed. So as I mentioned during the manager's report, the NEPA application has been sent to the MBRC. So in 2023, the City of Caribou applied for Northern Border Regional Commission grant to begin the work envisioned by the Caribou Riverfront Redevelopment Committee. This grant application included two major components. The hiring of a consultant to develop a riverfront master plan and the purchase of two available properties located at the end of Water Street so that the city would have an anchor on the Roostick River. The first step of the process was to compile the reports and information needed to submit for the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, environmental assessment, which included a Section 106 consultation with the state's Historic Preservation Office to comply with the National Historic Preservation Act. These reports and related information have been compiled and now have been submitted. Since I anticipate that the final notice to proceed may come from the MBRC prior to the September city council meeting, I would like to receive authorization by the city council to start the process to purchase the properties after the final notice to proceed has been received. This involves engaging in a contract with a commercial real estate appraiser. Those costs are not covered by the grant, and the cost would be approximately $3,000. Just a reminder that the cost to purchase the buildings, including legal costs, and to demo one building and restore the other are covered in the grant. These properties are in the downtown Tiff district, and Tiff funds can be used for riverfront projects. There has been funding set aside for technical assistance for Brownfields grant applications in anticipation of this expense. Note, both properties meet the definition of a Brownfield, and the environmental site assessments were funded by the Maine DEP with their 128A funding at no cost to the city.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to authorize staff to take the next steps with the MBRC grant after receiving the final notice to proceed.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And there's also a copy on page 49 of the Bird's Eye site. Apparently, I've got it with the wrong grant. It should have been with the one on page 47. But this shows the Bird's Eye site, where the proposed police station location is and where those areas of concern are. And it shows where those, the area of concern number five with the PCB soils. That's on page 49 of it.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Just have it in the wrong order.
Okay, got it.
That should have been with the first one we talked about.
Thank you. Okay, item number 12, reports and discussion by mayor and council members. I will start down at this end of the table this evening.
Oh, my goodness. I don't have a whole lot. We have a kind of a new little... I don't know if it's a committee, the, our little holiday committee?
Sure.
It's a kind of a committee. I'm excited about that. So I'm not gonna, I don't want to let too much out of the bag yet, but there's gonna be some fun things happening starting after Black Friday or Thanksgiving.
Small Business Saturday.
Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, yes, whatever, you know, the shopping day after Thanksgiving. And we're gonna have some pretty cool things happening, so stay tuned.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor? Councilor Kelly?
I'm all set.
All right. I'm all set as well. Still need to come up with more things to report on.
Well, maybe we'll have lights next time.
We might have, if we have, if we have lights in a poll next time, then we're gonna be very happy.
See, Thursday, we'll have a meeting.
Then we'll have something to talk about. Something to report.
All right.
I hope to have a video of that. You can sit out there with a chair.
Yeah, we might need to see some footage.
Yes.
Okay, our next regular meeting is September 23, 2024. We do have executive sessions on the agenda for this evening. Let's see. What are the wishes of the council?
I make a motion to go into executive session.
I think we have to.
Was that right?
Yeah.
We have to do each one.
Four union negotiations.
Oh, I have to do each one?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me put my glasses back on. Do I just do one?
You can do, you can do, you can do them all.
Okay.
Well, we need to do one at a time.
For union negotiations?
Okay, do one at a time.
First, one MRSA subsection 405.6. D for the Fire Department Union. Executive session.
Oh, hang on. We're gonna do one at a time.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, is that, oh, each, after each one we're gonna do?
After each one.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Is there a second? I second it.
Okay.
Moving seconded. Further discussion? Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Yep.
Aye. Motion carries.[1756.18]